Quorum being present. I'll call the 2017 Annual Town Meeting Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and join us if you wish. And our new Select Woman, Maureen Grodin, will lead us in the pledge. And we can't find the flag, so let's envision one, close our eyes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Grodin. Please be seated. Twelve years ago, I introduced a voluntary Pledge of Allegiance. Our tradition now, since I've been moderators, to have citizens recite the pledge. This falls squarely within the moderator's right to regulate the proceedings. This is the moderator's discretion, but is ingrained now as part of our tradition. Good evening, fellow citizens and voters of Southampton. Welcome to our 2017 Annual Town Meeting. I'm Robert Floyd, your Town Moderator. Thank you for your continued support. It's an honor to be elected Town Moderator, and serving you is a privilege. Your positive feedback is quite encouraging and most valued. For full transparency and disclosure, I serve you by being Southampton Cemetery Commissioner, Cemetery Superintendent, and East Hampton Media Board Member. Our town meeting is a business meeting of Southampton. Our legislative session call pursuant to a warrant that lists the only topics on which our meeting tonight may actually take action. And I will read the warrant. Town of Southampton, warrant for the Annual Town Meeting, May 16, 2017, to either of the constables of the Town of Southampton in said county. Greetings in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the precincts of the Town of Southampton, County of Hampshire, qualified to vote in election in town affairs, to meet in the cafeteria, gymnasium, William E. Norris School, 34 Palmeri Meadow Road, Southampton, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, May 16, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. Then and there to act on the following articles. Posted and signed by Constable Michael Goyette. We have exits from the room. I think there's five, but I see four. Bathrooms, gentlemen, ladies, in the hallways. The Annual Town Report is online, in case they run out in the back. May we have a moment of silence now in keeping with Southampton's culture for those who have moved forward since we last met, most recently including our oldest citizen, 105-year young Ruth Fisher. Tonight, our Annual Town Meeting is live. Yes? It is live for the very first time. Thank you, East Hampton Media, Channel 191. Deputy Moderator, I publicly thank Carl Keener for his second successful year as Southampton Deputy Moderator. Without objection, Carl Keener will be permitted to continue as Deputy Moderator for one more year. Congratulations. It's unanimous. Well, our elected Town Clerk, Jeanine Domina, administered the oath of office. Thank you. The warrant. I continue to host an annual pre-town meeting preview on our town's cable access station about ten days before an annual or special town meeting. It's not as exciting as this weekend's Spring at the Southampton, where Saturday, 8 to 2, the library's book and bake sale, Women's Club plant sale, Mother's Rummage sale, and church and senior centers' tag sales, plus more occur. The info session works well, and investment of an hour makes our actual town meeting smoother from your perspective. As moderator, it also serves to put me on notice as to where to expect debate and awaken us as where to expect amendments. The handouts that we allow are considered background material and must have some relevance to town meeting. No literature is to be handed out into town meeting area or in the hall. Records retained for official town meeting businesses are critical to Department of Revenue, Bond, Council, and Attorney General. The moderator's rules, not town council's legal opinion, apply within the meeting room and while town meeting is in progress. For the third time, your moderators permitted commercial TV cameras. They agree to remain in the back of the meeting room on the other side of a line on the floor or outside the building, not in the aisles or inside the doors in the hallways. My role as your Town Moderator is to facilitate, provide an open process that voters trust, and administer rules and guidelines in an even-handed manner, not to assure any particular outcome. Your responsibility tonight is to be the legislator branch of our town government for tonight's articles and budget. Tonight, you exercise your freedom of speech. You all have one vote, one single choice, yes or no, for each article. Ground rules, courtesies, guidelines. I believe it is important to set ground rules early, then stick with them. Town meeting is a legislative legislature and subject to its own rules within the Commonwealth laws. It needs rules and is one of my duties as your moderator. Why? Simple efficiency is important so the business of the meeting can be accomplished more accurately with fewer errors and less waste of time. Two, more importantly, the protection of the rights of individuals against illegal encroachment, unintentional or otherwise. Town meeting works if you want it to work, not for you alone, but for the whole community. Yes, there are those actively wanting to change or accept the former town meeting government. Tonight, we proceed with what we have since 1773, when town meeting named Southampton. The executive branch of our town government, our Select Board Finance Committee, Town Treasurer, Town Accountant, and Town Administrator have worked hard on the articles in our budget. Their work is done. Our Town Clerk contributes effectively. Although their members sit up front, it is in our tradition they individually do not have more of a vote tonight than any one of you at our annual town meeting. Existence of our Finance Committee members as an advisory group does not relieve the rest of you from thinking and asking questions for yourselves. The essence, the necessary ingredients of a town meeting, only require the Town Clerk, Town Moderator, the warrant, and in Southampton, a quorum of 25 people. Southampton's town meetings are conducted in accordance with Mass General Laws, our general bylaws, traditional customs and practices we have followed for many years with guidance by the principles and rules of conduct. In town meeting time, a handbook, parliamentary law, not Robert's Rules of Order. This is an organic process, as our customs, traditions, and practices evolve. Town ball law states that our town meeting tonight goes to 10 o'clock and may continue tomorrow from 7 to 10. I have reserved the next three evenings of my calendar for you in case of continuance. I am here to ensure those who wish to address this meeting have the opportunity and to ensure the integrity of our meeting stays as intact as possible. Both sides need and will be heard on each and every article. Rights to speak. The plan tonight is for you to speak no more than five minutes at a time. Experience here demonstrates, well, our minds are rarely changed after the first five minutes of a speech. And no more than twice on any article, except to correct an error or answer a question. All discussions must be relevant to a motion under an article and a warrant, and must be within the scope of each article before us. Please allow everyone an opportunity to be heard before you request to be heard a second time on an article. Remarks should be concise, to the point. I will allow anyone who previously spoke to address the meeting again, but it has to be a new point or rebuttal, no repetition. Speaking and participating at a town meeting is a right, but like all rights, it should not be abused nor denied. I continue to make all the procedures clear to everyone. This has led to a much smoother running town meeting and more knowledgeable voters who are pretty consistent, well-informed, and ask good questions. Procedures are being used to accomplish things instead of manipulating the proceedings. Before you vote yes or no, you individually are free to question, to amend, and to table any motion, that is, to legislate in a civilized way. No comments of a personal nature, no naming of names, are to be made. There is never any occasion for one speaker to address another in the second person. And this will not be permitted, nor will cross-examinations be permitted tonight. Root behavior, especially shouting, bullying, lecturing, and personal attacks, will not be tolerated. Anyone unwilling to comply with these rules will be removed after their third warning. So let this be our first warning. Ready to contribute something new? Please approach the microphone up front and stand in line to be recognized and turned. First come, first heard. State your name and address clearly. All discussions must be relevant to the particular motion before us. The merits or lack thereof for the motion. Please face me, your Town Moderator, with your opinions, questions, and answers. This is meant to prevent lecturing, bullying, intimidation, and cross-examination. I will only recognize speakers standing at the microphone unless it is a point of order. I will only recognize a motion to move the question, that is, to vote now, not keep talking, from someone who is standing at the microphone and recognized in due order. Simply because someone says something does not make it true. When a majority leans, leans towards approving or denying, it does not make it true. When a majority leans towards approving or denying, it does not make it right by itself. Listen courteously, please, and then vote exactly as you think right. Move the order of articles. In my experience, if there is a clearly stated and logical reason to move an article to an earlier position for consideration, there will be no objection. Yet, I will ask if there is objection. If there is objection voiced, we will then await a motion and see if it secures the vote required. Any motions to move? Please respect. You cannot speak and then try to move the question in one standing. Thank you all for your patience and respecting everyone tonight. These guidelines will assist us in a more efficient meeting. Outside speakers, it is Southampton's custom to vote to allow someone new to address you. I read the name this evening. Ms. Vicki Elson, M.A.C.C.E.C.D., from Northampton. Without objection, this non-voter with an interest or expertise will be permitted to speak in the meeting. Hearing no objections, we will proceed. Thank you. May I hear a motion for Article 1, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to hear presentations of the Richard C. Allen Educational Awards, sponsored by the Highway Department and Transfer Station.
Motion made, or is second?
Second.
Motion made and second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Please proceed. Mr. Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent.
Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent. Mr. Moderator, it is my pleasure to announce this year's recipients of the Richard C. Allen Memorial Scholarship Award. Mr. Allen served Southampton for only over 20 years on numerous boards and committees. Prior to his time in our town, Mr. Allen served for 18 years as a selectman in Brimfield, Mass. In addition, Mr. Allen was employed as police chief and fire chief, amounting to over 38 years of public service. Mr. Allen's service to his community sets an example for others to emulate. It is in his honor that this award is named. This award is made possible through donations of nickel-returnable cans and bottles from the public and through the efforts of the Southampton Highway Department and Transfer Station. This year, we have three $500 recipients. And if you could come up when I call your name. Amanda Labrie. And I believe Katelyn Kazounis couldn't be with us this evening. But congratulations to her as well.
Thank you. Yep?
Mr. Moderator, while I have the microphone, I'd like to acknowledge the volunteers who serve on the various boards, commissions, and committees who help to keep this town running. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion for Article 2, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to hear presentations of state certificates.
Motion made, a second?
Second.
Motion made and second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Unanimous, please proceed.
Mr. Moderator, I'm very pleased to give citations from State Senate, from Senator Humison, to the following individuals. I guess he's not here, so we'll move right on. He'll be here later, so we'll stop the meeting and we'll... Come on. And Charlie McDonald, Charlie number two. Charlie was the water guy. I was the dirt guy. Yeah. Congratulations. There you are, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Congratulations to all. May I hear a motion for Article 3, please?
John Martin, 106 Clark Street. This is to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Southampton bylaws. Article 1, Town Meeting, by adding a new section 8 to be worded as follows. Section 8A, all speakers at Town Meeting shall be recognized by and address the moderator and shall face and speak directly to the voters in attendance in the meeting hall. And B, all public officials located at tables in front of the hall shall face towards the voters and shall also stand to be recognized by and first address the moderator, and shall then also face and speak directly to the voters. And C, speakers shall not address specific individuals within the hall nor engage in any rude behavior towards any individuals. And D, any and all amendments to any article on the floor shall be accepted by the moderator, including increases to monetary articles up to 10% increase, but not to exceed $10,000, in accordance with Southampton Town Meeting tradition, or take any action relative thereto.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have motion and seconded. I will step down as moderator.
Good evening. We have this article on the floor. Is there anyone that would like to speak to it?
Mr. Moderator, I endorse the idea of being able to speak the audience.
I'm sorry, your name, please?
Oh, Jim Palermo, 68 Glendale Road. My reason for supporting this motion is that, as the moderator pointed out earlier, this is a legislative session, and we are addressing the people who are going to vote. It is true that we're not supposed to engage in colloquy or any other kind of interaction among ourselves, but in addressing the main points of any kind of pending article, I think it is more effective to be able to face the voters, noting also that freedom of speech involves more than just words. It includes gestures and inflection and all the other forms we have of expressing our opinions. At the same time, however, and I'm not really sure how to do this, I have some reservations about Section D. That is, regarding amendments to any article on the floor involving monetary amounts of up to a 10% increase but not to exceed $10,000. I'm not really conversant with the way the Finance Committee operates, but it's my understanding that that is not an acceptable practice. So if it's possible to amend this article to exclude Section D, I would so move.
In order to do that, there would have to be an amendment to the article, and we would need that presented in writing.
Okay.
John Martin, 106 Clark Street, member of the Select Board. We checked with Town Consul at KP Law, Michelle Randazzo, and she said, as written, it's legal to put it this way. Somebody wants to amend it, of course, we're fine with that, but as written, it is a legal
Robert Floyd, 15 East Street. Mr. Moderator, I believe this motion on this article exceeds the authority of town meeting and that interferes with the Town Moderator in the execution of his duties. It may be of doubtful legality, both in substance and form. The conduct of the meeting is the moderator's responsibility. This article's motion appears to be frivolous, irrelevant, illegal, and contrary to proper procedure. I strictly enforce formality, such as addressing all remarks to the moderator, not speaking directly to the voters. No salesmanship, no theatrics, no body language, only content. The moderator's authority is over process, not over outcome. The moderator leads the outcome to the fully informed voters. Mass General Laws 39, Section 15 states, "The moderator shall decide and regulate the proceedings and decide all questions of order." I uphold this law. The reason for a moderator to determine when a motion is out of order and beyond the scope of the article, I will be strongly voting against this motion.
John Martin, member of the Select Board. Again, we checked this along with Town Consul, and they feel that because it's an amendment to a general bylaw, it's not like a normal motion on the floor. What we're asking for is to amend the bylaw, and that's up to the voters to do. So, not going with what the moderator said, but it's amending a bylaw and has been checked by our legal consul and vetted as proper.
Ed Gwinner, Golden Circle. For years now, we've been bowing to the moderator. We're the town. We're the town. And I don't like talking to the backs of my Select Board. I like to face them. Like to face the Finance Committee. It's not all about one man. It's about the town.
Jay Feranti, Karen Wayne. I'd like to ask the Finance Committee if they discussed this particular article and if they had a vote and how they felt about it.
Michael Rosenberg, 144 East Street, Finance Committee Chair. In general, we do not discuss and weigh in on citizen petitions. They aren't necessarily within our purview. While this does have a financial impact, we felt it was more procedural towards the meeting versus having a financial, a financial impact on our process. So no, we have not discussed it. We have not voted on it.
Back again. I guess my next question. Obviously, if this particular motion passes without amendment, will it take effect immediately or will there be another motion necessary to make it take effect immediately?
Is there someone that can address that?
Mr. Moderator, Bob Markle, 197 Eighth Street, Charlestown, interim Town Administrator. All amendments to the town bylaws have to be approved by the Attorney General's office. And so it would take normally around 30 days before any bylaw would be put into effect. We don't guarantee 30 days, but typically, we get a response from the Attorney General's office when it comes in, but it's normally around four weeks.
Suppose there's a motion to make it effective immediately, and that motion passes.
Again, the rule in Massachusetts is that the Attorney General has to approve. Making it effective immediately, I don't think would carry... A vote to make it effective immediately, I don't think would, would conform to that rule. And so, for better or worse, all bylaws must be approved by the AG's office, and it takes a period of time.
Judy Keener, 168 County Road. I am against this. I request that make a motion that we table this. This has been... Many people do not feel comfortable speaking in front of people, and I have seen it work much better in the last few years. So I make a motion that we table this article.
I have a motion to table... I have a motion to table this. Do I have a second? We have a motion to table and a second. All in favor of tabling this article?
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. Robert Floyd, 15 East Street. You need a two-thirds majority to table any article with the counter, with the cards.
Do we have the counters? Where are our counters? With this, you will use the white card. All in favor of tabling this article? Please raise your right hand. Or your white card, I'm sorry.
Thirty-one.
All, all against? Oh, I'm sorry, forty? Forty. Thirty-one and forty. Are we all set? Those against?
Thirty-five.
Fifty-three. Sorry? Right. We do not have a two-thirds majority either way. So, I believe this would fail.
I'd like to make a motion, we call the question.
I'm sorry?
John Martin, I'd like to make a motion, we call the question.
I have a motion to call the question, do I have a second? Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Let's count it. All those in favor, please raise your white card. For Article Three. They're voting on Article Three as written. Oh, I'm sorry, you're voting on Article Three as written. All in favor, please raise your white card.
Thirty-seven.
All those opposed?
Twenty-four. Twenty-four.
We have ninety-five, four, sixty opposed, the ayes have it.
May I hear a motion for Article Four, please? And by the way, there is no sound on the live feed at home. Motion for Article Four.
Jana Kane, eighty-three Glendale Road. I guess I'm talking into the ice cream cone. Article Four, citizens petition, town meeting support for legislation to limit the influence of money in politics, to see if the town will vote to support tough new anti-corruption laws to close loopholes in Massachusetts campaign finance regulation that currently allows unrelated out-of-state money to infiltrate state and local elections and support the goals outlined in the American Anti-Corruption Act to remove the corrupting influence of money from our political system. The Act prohibits politicians from taking campaign money from special interest groups, including private industries and unions, increases transparency for campaign funding, empowers all voters through a tax rebate voucher to contribute to candidates they support, prohibits representatives, representatives and senior staff from all lobbying activity for five years once they leave office, and places limits on super PACs.
Thank you, motion made, do I hear a second? Who would like to speak on this?
Francine Tishman, eighty-three Glendale Road. Good evening. Let me start by saying that this article is truly a nonpartisan effort brought forward as a result of a petition signed by Southampton residents who are registered Republicans, Democrats and Independents. This is a nonpartisan, non-binding resolution calling on our state and federal governments to pass anti-corruption reforms. The American Anti-Corruption Act was created by policy experts from Represent Us, a nonpartisan national organization that happens to be headquartered right here in Florence, Massachusetts, and has local chapters across the country. The focus of this effort is to communicate to our legislators in Boston and Washington that the influence that big money has in our government is unacceptable. This influence comes from large corporations, lobbyists representing special interest groups and industries, wealthy individuals, unions and other organizations who believe that their voices deserve to be heard above the rest of us. It is a long process, but this initiative is necessary if we are going to fix anything else, ever. Your yes vote will not change anything about how we run our town government, but sends a message that we can no longer accept the corrupting influence of big money on our elections and in our government. Your yes vote won't fix the system overnight, but it will be a significant step toward a state and federal government that represents all of us and not wealthy special interest corporations and other influential organizations. Your yes vote will help accelerate the nationwide movement for greater transparency, integrity and responsiveness in government. At the state level, you should know that this law has become law in the state of South Dakota, and just this spring, thirty towns across Massachusetts have the American Anti-Corruption Act on their annual town meeting. To date, it has overwhelmingly passed in neighboring towns here in western Massachusetts that include Colrain, Covington, Hadley, South Hadley, Leverett, Whately, Montague, Plainfield, Conway, Hatfield, Long Meadow, Chutes Berry, and as recently as last night, Amherst. A similar article was also passed in Sunderland. Let's add Southampton to the list of towns supporting this resolution to ensure that the voices of individual voters is what our elected officials hear and represent. There's more information about the Act on the back table, you may have picked it up when you came in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on this? Anybody like to speak against it? Seeing none will vote, all those in favor of the motion under Article Four, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The article, a motion under Article Four passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article Five, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend Article, what's that, twenty-nine of the town bylaws by adding Section Six, the Wetlands Protection Bylaw, as set forth in Article Five of the warrant for the May sixteenth, twenty-seventeen annual town meeting.
Second? Motion made, do I hear a second? Second? I'll ask for the second first. Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Marla Hank, Gilbert Road Conservation Commission.
A little closer, Marla, real ice cream cone.
In case it is not clear what we do, conservation commissions were begun in the late nineteen-
Marla, could you name an address?
I, okay.
And then, my bad, go ahead.
All right, Marla Hank Conservation Commission, Gilbert Road.
Thank you.
In case it is not clear what we do, conservation commissions were begun in the late nineteen-fifties to help conserve open space. In nineteen-seventy-two, they were given the responsibility for local permitting of the Wetlands Protection Act, which is state law, MGL Chapter one thirty-one, Section forty, as well as three-ten CMR ten point zero-zero, for people who want to look it up on their smartphones. Fast forward to two thousand thirteen, to page one of the Southampton Master Plan. Under the heading, "A Community Vision," it states, "The people of Southampton support new development and redevelopment that are in harmony with natural resources, the environment, community values and likely future needs, and are focused in priority areas identified by the community." In keeping with this community vision, we have proposed this Wetlands Protection Bylaw. A small handout is available to highlight the differences between the proposed bylaw and the existing law, which is what takes most of those thirteen pages. The numbers in the little handout correspond to the headings in the complete bylaw, which is contained in the handout of the articles. So number two is purpose. The purpose of this bylaw is to aid in the consistent and effective implementation of the Wetlands Protection Act. It's to provide for the reasonable protection and conservation of certain irreplaceable natural features, resources and amenities for the benefit and welfare of the present and future inhabitants of the town of Southampton. A conservation zone, under four point three. This is a twenty-five-foot wide strip of undisturbed vegetation within a buffer zone called the conservation zone. It will be maintained adjacent to any resource area. No work, structures or alterations will be allowed within the construction zone unless permitted by the commission. Exceptions are made for minor activities such as mowing, gardening and pruning within existing lawn, garden or landscaped areas currently occurring at the time of the adoption of the bylaw. To be clear, this includes maintenance of farmland. Number three-three-three, vernal pools, I will leave discussed by another member of the commission who is an expert in that area. Number twelve, enforcement order WPA Form nine. Any person who violates provisions of this bylaw may be ordered to restore the property to its original condition and/or take other action deemed reasonable and necessary to remedy such violations, or may be fined or both. We as a conservation commission already issue enforcement orders. What is new is the possibility of issuing fines if there is a continuing problem. We are made aware of violations either by someone contacting the conservation commission directly or by someone contacting DEP who then contacts us. If there is an actual violation and it has been corrected or is being worked on, there would be no fine, only if no proof has been presented that there is no violation or nothing is being done to correct the violation, would the commission consider a fine.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brittany, forty-seven Coleman Road, on the Conservation Commission.
Closer.
And, um-
Closer, Brittany, closer.
Closer, sorry.
Sure you like an ice cream cone?
Okay, and I also work for a conservation organization, so in my opinion, the most important part of our bylaw is the means to protect vernal pools. Many vernal pools already have protection because they're part of bigger wetlands, however, small pools, which are just as important, currently have no protection. Vernal pools serve as important nurseries for salmoners, frogs, fairies, shrimp and other invertebrates due to the lack of egg-eating fish. They host concerts of frog song all summer long and provide vital habitat for many other animals like birds and mammals. It is all of our responsibility to work together to preserve the natural character of Southampton, and that's exactly what this bylaw aims to do. If passed, this bylaw would only apply to new permitted projects.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this? By the way, you can come right down and get in line, you don't have to be invited individually.
Mr. Moderator, Charlie Keneke, 146 Valley Road. I find this bylaw to be too broad scope and sweeping. I don't believe the town has time to evaluate this, I don't believe this forum is the time to evaluate it. I would strongly suggest that we pass over this article at this time until we can be more educated in this arena.
Well, the motion is in play, so we can't pass over, but we can table, do you wish to table it?
I wish, I move to table.
Okay, we have a motion to table?
Second.
And, I didn't ask for a second. We have a motion to table, and what this means is it stops debate, it stops discussion, and we immediately vote, second.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Counters, please. All those in favor of tabling, please sit down, all those in favor of tabling this motion to kill it, please raise your cards.
Thirty-eight.
Thank you. Seventy-seven? We all set? Our counters? Okay, put your cards down. All those against, please raise your hand, all those wanting to continue discussion and not table it, please raise your cards.
Thirty-one.
We good? Thank you. Hundred-and-fifteen to table and sixty-one against, this is tabled. May I hear a motion for Article Six, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Article fifteen of the Southampton bylaws by adding Sections Six and Seven as set forth in Article Six of the warrant for the May sixteenth, twenty-seventeen annual town meeting.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Mr. Moderator, Charlie Kineke again. Basically, this is just cleaning up a loose end with language in our old bylaws. It's to ensure that the town can recover costs when we do have to take and secure a dog.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone like to speak against this article? Seeing none will vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Six, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The ayes have it by majority. It passes by majority. Motion for Article Seven, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Mass General Law Chapter forty-one, Section nineteen-K and Mass General Law Chapter forty-one, Section one-zero-eight-P and Mass General Law Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one-A and a half, authorizing the town to compensate the town clerk, the treasurer-collector, the town accountant, and the principal assessor by increasing their compensation by ten percent where applicable, up to a maximum of one thousand annually for successfully completing the necessary course of study and training to become officially certified.
Motion made or have a second?
I second it.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please?
Mr. Moderator, Bob Markle, one ninety-seven Eighth Street, Charles Town. Um, state statute allows cities and towns to establish incentives for their chief financial officers, as well as the town clerk, uh, to continue their education and to become certified in their field. Typically, it requires at least two years of schooling, uh, often three years, and an examination to become certified. Um, this proposal would, uh, accept state statutes and incorporate this, uh, into, into our bylaws and, um, permit basically those financial officers who are certified to receive a stipend annually of a thousand dollars, an additional a thousand dollars. Currently, we have one person on our staff who is certified. Others are working towards that.
Thank you. Motion. Uh, anybody else like to speak on this? Anybody like to speak against it? Seeing none, will vote on the motion under Article Seven. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion passes by majority for Article Seven. May I hear a motion for Article Eight, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town bylaw by adding Article forty-one, the Right to Farm Bylaw, as set forth in Article Eight of the warrant for the May sixteen, two thousand and seventeen annual town meeting.
Motion made or here is second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please?
Charlie Kineke, one forty-six Valley Road. Mr. Moderator, this was brought to the select board's attention by the Agricultural Committee of the town. The Agricultural Committee of the town would like to see the town endorse the fact that we are an agricultural community. If you are to read this bylaw, you would see that the only real caveat of question would be the fact that it requires any property transfers to notify the person purchasing that this is an agricultural or farming community. Everything else there is basically just reiterating that we are an agricultural-based community.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I object to this-
Name and address before you object.
-James Palermo, sixty-eight Glendale Road.
Thank you.
Southampton. Um, if I had a red flag or a warning siren, I think I'd be sounding the alarm to warn people against this article. We're proud that this is a farming community, and we support our farmers in every way. But we cannot and should not be asked to put our financial interests at risk by passing this article, which is unnecessary and potentially very harmful. Among the objections I have is it's not clear from the language of this article whether it supersedes certain zoning ordinances. There's no definition of how large a parcel of land must be before it's considered a commercial farm. Our current zoning ordinances permit by right farming in almost every zoning area, including residential rural, residential neighborhood, and residential village. What this proposed article seeks, however, is to limit the ability of people whose land abuts a farm to complain about conditions that have a negative impact on our quality of life. The article includes grievance procedure, but as long as a farmer complies with this article, complaints about odors, noise, the use of pesticides have no chance of winning. Also, there is a serious risk that our homes will lose value because this article requires that when we sell our homes, we have to disclose in writing to a potential buyer that the property lies within a town in which farming activities cause noise, dust, and odors. In real world, that means that if we, or the new owners of our home, want to complain about a farming practice that is loud or that smells bad, such as a pig or goat farm going up next door, we would not have a leg to stand on because all those bad things are protected by the proposed article. I see no reason why commercial farms should be treated any differently than any other commercial enterprise, such as a restaurant with an outside patio at which loud music is played or a manufacturing facility that emits fumes and smoke. But this article does just that. It puts the rights of farmers over the rights of homeowners, and I urge therefore that we vote no on this article.
Thank you.
Margaret Walden, twenty-one Fomer Road. Doing some research for the Historical Society, it suddenly struck me on how many farms are gone in Southampton. The whole, the whole southeastern area was all dairy farms when I was a little girl. Beautiful, we're losing, the, losing our pastures, we're losing our views. You know, he speaks, the gentleman recently spoke of commercial farming. And not all farming is commercial. One thing we have heaven to be concerned about is the right for the ordinary person to have a few chickens or a cow if they've got the land for it. And we see urbanization slowly encroaching us, and I would like to oppose it.
Thank you. He's in line. Excuse me, he was in line.
Hi, my name's Matt Fletcher. I'm from twenty-two Gun Road, um-
A little louder, Matt, just kinda-
Twenty-two Gun Road. Um, kinda speaking on behalf of some of the farms in town.
You need to speak for yourself at a town meeting.
And myself.
Even though you're, 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 you may parallel what others believe, but you're here not to represent anybody but your own feelings.
Right. Um, being involved in farming in this town is, um, really important to me. And on behalf of myself and my family, we understand concerns from our neighbors and landowners, but we are already practicing common sense, what we call it, common sense practice. We don't go and, you know, spread manure next to people's houses near holidays. We always keep in mind that we have neighbors. They're customers to some extent to us. We need to keep them happy. And a lot of the stuff we do on a daily basis on the farm, we keep in mind that our neighbors are always gonna be there, and we need to keep them happy so we have a good relationship in this town. And I agree with what was just previously said, is for a long time, uh, I personally have watched a lot of really great farmland in this town be developed, for whatever reason that be, and I think, um, it's time that we pay attention to the open farmland and try to keep some of us around.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chief Ferranti, Karen Lane. I, I was wondering if my garden would fall under this, uh, regulation. It's not very big. But, uh, while I came to the mic here, again, I like to go to the, the Finance Committee. I understand that they, they deliberate these issues and maybe even research it. So does the Finance Committee have any particular vote on this or, or any? They, they used to put them on the, uh-
We'll find out when you stop talking. It's right here.
Michael Rosenberg, one forty-four East Street, Finance Committee Chair. Um, as with some of the other bylaw questions, we did not weigh in on this as a committee. Um, we don't feel it's within our purview. It's an adoption of a bylaw that the town votes on. You know, we may have opinions, and we may speak to those opinions, but we don't vote as a committee.
Thank you.
Henry Barton, fifty-one Pomroy Meadow Road. I was, uh, chair of the Master Plan Committee some years ago. Uh, and in surveying, uh, community preferences, there was a clear preference for maintaining the residential quality of the town, as well as the historical quality of the town. And I would point out to the previous speaker, uh, who argued that residents would have no appeal against any, uh, discomfort that might be caused by farming. There is a, uh, section in this bylaw which allows for the Select Board and other entities and the Agricultural Commission to undertake efforts to mediate uh, between farmers and potentially aggrieved neighbors. I would also point out that, uh, the smell of manure never hurt anybody. Uh, pesticides might, uh, but, uh, beyond that, and, and by the way, farming activities typically do not take place at night. They take place during the day. Uh, so that I think, uh, this is, this bylaw is a way to help maintain the resident, the agricultural character of the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen Groden, Cheryl Lane, and Select Board. I have a question, um, from the Board of Health standpoint, if there are any issues regarding odor or noise or care of animals. I'm assuming that the Board of Health would still, um, investigate.
Thank you.
Dan Pellegrini, seventy-six Brookledge Road. Um, I, I've been reading through this, and I don't see how it negatively impacts farms or positively impacts it. It, it's nothing more than putting something on a deed as we sell it. At the end of the day, this isn't gonna promote more people to do farms. This isn't gonna save more land. Uh, I'm just looking for the relevance of this. I mean, for us to put on a deed when we sell a house, that we're a farm community? I, I just don't see the relevance. I support farms. I think they're wonderful. I think open spaces are great. But at the end of the day, this really has no teeth, has no merit, and I don't even understand why we're debating it.
Thank you.
Michael Hutchins, twenty-eight Visonett Circle. Um, I oppose this not because I'm, I'm against the farming industry. Actually, I, I like that part of Southampton. It's one of the reasons I moved here, uh, being more in the country. What I'm against here is Section Four, the disclosure notification. I'd be fine for this if that part was wiped out of the amendment or the, the, the proposal. It just, I don't think that I should have to disclose to a buyer that you're moving into a farm town, and somebody might be farming or spreading manure or horses running around. Um, I just think that needs to go away out of the part of it.
Thank you.
Jennifer Manganielli, fourteen Walcott Road. Um, I was just wondering, um, if there's anything in the town law right now that prohibits people from farming in general? I guess I'm a little curious why this is of relevance if most people can farm anyway, and someone can correct me on that afterwards if I'm wrong on that. Um, I also am a proponent for particularly small farms, and I love that about this area as well. Um, but I think it needs to be promoted in a more responsible manner. I think there are several, several parts of this that are extremely irresponsible in terms of just broadly saying you can apply manure, fertilizer, and pesticides with absolutely no responsibility and, and, um, containment involved in that. So I am opposed to that for those reasons.
Thank you.
Kurt Bojly, eleven Strong Road, Southampton.
Get the mic up.
Get it up there. Okay. How's this?
Better.
Uh, together with Hank Barton, I served on the Planning Committee a number of years ago, and one of the things that was clear at the time, and still is, is that Southampton residents value-
Closer.
Value the characteristic of Southampton as a, as a rural area. If you think back, and first time you saw Beshista's Farm, or Searl's Property, or, uh, Tim Wing's Property, just these big, open expanses that, that are very attractive. And the thing, the question we always had was, how can we help the farmers? How can we help them stay? How can we help them keep their open space? And I support this, uh, article because it does one more thing to help them, and they can use all the help they can get at this point. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? You don't need to raise your hand. Get in line. Been here before.
I'm not that tall.
You gotta get that down.
Judy Keener, one sixty-eight County Road. I would like to call the question.
You just, I, 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 call the question means we'll vote, but we have to vote, we have to count them, and you have one person behind you, so. You, you wanna speak? Or you good?
Jim Palermo, sixty-eight Glendale Road.
Yep.
Southampton. Uh, I just wanna make sure that people understand the zoning ordinances provide that farms can start just about anywhere in town. This ordinance is not, uh, or the proposed article does not give farmers greater uh, ability to start a farm than what already exists in the ordinance. But what it seems to do is it excludes from any kind of complaint by an abutter about any objectionable practices that might take place at a farm, uh, such as odors or, uh, not good use of pesticides. One of the prior speakers mentioned about responsible farming, and I think that probably applies to most of the farms in the area that are responsible and are good. But this sort of says that, you know, if there are noise or slow-moving tractors or, uh, use of pesticides or, uh, you know, and, and it doesn't define how much acreage you need if you have a horse, if you have sheep or pigs, that your abutters may not-
Thank you.
-raise any objections.
Thank you. All our one rebuttal, then we'll vote.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, I'm gonna go back a few years when I was a State District Health Officer. The enforcement relative to the Board of Health is Chapter one-eleven, Section one-twenty-five-A. There's a separate statute in general law that relative to nuisance for farming. It's actually tried in district court. That allows the Board of Health to proceed as long as it's not considered normal farming practices. The use of pesticide is licensed and regulated under the Department of Agriculture under the Pesticide Bureau. It requires farmers to have licenses and to keep accountability of materials that they use and to take and submit to the Pesticide Bureau where these applications have been administered to. They are monitored.
Thank you. We're gonna vote. All those in favor of the motion, Right to Farm, Article Eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Could call it, but we're gonna count as some bylaw that this is important. All those in favor of the motion for the bylaw, Right to Farm, raise your cards, and you will be counted. And counters? Counters? Counters, you counted these two. Somebody's counting. Yep, okay. Just make sure everybody gets counted. Yes?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, thank you. Fifty-eight? Okay, put your hands down. Those opposed, please raise your cards.
Twenty-four.
Keep your hands up. The reason we- The reason we double up is to ensure accuracy. I got this from Williamsburg attending one of their annual meetings and I was impressed. That's it? We're good? Done? Okay. Uh, the ayes, 110 to 74. This passes by majority. Motion for Article 9, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer $2,588 from free cash to the police department's wage account to compensate part-time police officers.
Motion made or seconded?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this? Vicki?
Uh, Vicki Morrow, Pomray Meadow Road, Town Accountant. Um, last year, the police department finalized their, um, contractual union agreement and this is just, um, something that was missed when we did retro pay for the police officers and this is going to take care of that for them.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody want to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 9, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Unanimous, uh, motion passes for Article 9. May I have a motion for Article 10, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate $16,182,192 to fund all municipal departments and the public schools during fiscal 2018 as shown in the town's annual operating budget for fiscal 2018.
Motion made or seconded?
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Michael Rosenberg, 144 East Street, Finance Committee Chair. Um, the Finance Committee did not recommend the budget as it is before you. Um, after much deliberation regarding this year's budgeting process, the Finance Committee voted to propose an alternate budget, which we, which, which we felt was more financially prudent, fair and equitable. Our budget aligns more closely with the original budget the Finance Team submitted and is our best effort to keep the town on a fiscally responsible track. This motion makes adjustments to eight salary and expense lines, does not impact the revenue projections, and maintains Article 10's intent of raising and appropriating The Finance Committee provided copies of their proposed budget at the check-in table and is also included as an attachment. With that said, the Finance Committee would like to make a motion to amend Article 10. I move that the town amend the motion on the floor for Article 10 by replacing the reference attachment known as the town's annual operating budget for fiscal year 2018 with a Finance Committee budget recommendation dated 5/16/17.
Before I ask for a second, uh, this was approved by the Finance Committee?
Yes, it was. We voted last evening.
And you're wanting to substitute the entire budget, not raising or lowering any item, line item on its own?
Correct. We would be substituting the budget in its entirety. Our budget, we are proposing, however, only adjust eight line items, but we felt it was cleaner to substitute the entire as opposed to go line by line.
Do we get the same sum of balanced budget as before?
Yes.
I will entertain a second. Motion made and seconded? Please address. We're going to divide the question. Actually, we have an amendment. Backup. Backup, Robert. Uh, normally, we divide the question. What we're going to do is we're going to vote on an amendment to the budget, to the motion. Once that's voted on, whichever way it goes, we will then divide the question and vote individually on the different sections. So please proceed, uh, to defend your amendment.
So one of the reasons we did this was we felt that the, the raises and appropriations and things that were put in the budget before you in the warrant were not equitable to all parties. Um, when the Finance Team originally met to propose their, um, budget, the one that we had sent to the Select Board, we started out with a, a level budget. Uh, we level funded departments. And within the two days of us presenting that, our proposed budget had been changed. Um, line items had been moved around. Salaries had been increased. Revenues had been found. It frankly was not equitable or fair to the departments. So what the Finance Committee did after much deliberation was go through the article, try to scale back some of the increases, try to give back to the, some of the departments that weren't given the opportunity in the, um, original proposed budget from the Select Board. Um, like I had said, we adjusted eight line items in that budget. Um, the salary increases that we had adjusted, um, you know, some of the increases were at 10% or 19%, um, larger amounts. We still scaled those back to a 5% increase from the previous year. So we didn't necessarily level fund every department that was looking for an increase. We scaled it back so that the revenue that we would use to fund those raises could be used somewhere else in the budget for other programs, for other things that were needed. That is all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Martin, 106 Clark Street. Uh, this is the first time that any of us are seeing this budget, uh, it was changed by the Finance Committee and we requested it prior to the meeting, but we weren't able to get a copy. So we haven't had a chance to review this. Uh, so I, at some point, I, I hope it doesn't pass and we get a chance to review it and bring it back up maybe tomorrow. But my concern is a lot of these changes that the Finance Committee made were based on some contract negotiations we did with department heads. Uh, there's a decrease, uh, for the town clerk. There's a decrease for the treasurer-collector, decrease for the highway superintendent, decrease for the fire chief's salary. These folks are department heads and what we did is that we researched what other people were making in the similar town, uh, sized towns that we have. Let me do this one more time. Similar-sized towns that we have and we negotiated with these folks to bring them up to an equitable le, uh, level. We had people that are very low-level compared to their counterparts and we want to keep the people in town. These are the leaders of the departments and the towns. The, you know, fire chief, the police chief, the town accountant, the treasurer-collector, the clerk. These are all important people and we lose them to other towns because we don't pay them well enough. We're not just throwing money at them. We did a, a very thorough review of what other towns are paying and this is how we came up with it. We negotiated the contracts. And I've got to say, of the top paid 20 people in town, the town department heads are only three, three of the top 20. The rest of them are in the school system. They deserve to be paid that, but they have unions that negotiate for them. They have other people negotiate for them. These town department heads have us and that's why we're supporting this and we think, uh, they should be, uh, paid a fair and equitable wage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Pellegrini, 76 Crookledge Road. I just want to make sure the citizens of the town are aware of these contracts that were negotiated. Give you an example. One of them has a 19% increase and also in addition to that, it allows this individual to go to any class they choose during work hours and we have to pay for it. In addition to that, it automatically puts in overtime at a minimum of three hours for one-minute work. These contracts are unbelievable from the absurdity of the benefits and the ability for the department heads to write their own contracts and bring it to our Select Board. So once the Finance Committee saw the, I, I, I don't know, the abuse is, is what I can say that the contract, the contracts look like, we had to take some action to stop that and, and ultimately look at other ways to appropriate the monies. So what we did in all transparency is took down those absorbent double-digit raises and gave it back to the school. That's what we did with it. We gave it back to the school. And if we look at over the past six years, the finance, the budget for the fire department, which all deserve it, has gone up 98%. The budget for the highway department has gone up 58%. The school department has gone down 7%. And we just felt it was inappropriate for a department head to write a double-digit raise for themselves and negotiate benefits without the town seeing that. And that is ultimately why we stepped in.
Thank you.
Gary Thomas, 70th Street. You know, the town has a Finance Committee in order to keep this, the town fiscally sound. I have this perception that I felt over the, the years that there's not much communication uh, between the Finance Committee and the Select Board. And oftentimes, I come to these meetings and we find that the Select Board has made choices that do not comport with what the Finance Committee says. I think if you're going to have a Finance Committee, you need to respect what they come forward. It keeps the sound, the town fiscally sound. And I want to make sure that we stay viable and fiscally sound as a, as a community. So, um, I support recommendations from the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Martin, 106 Clark Street. Uh, prior speaker said that people will get overtime from minute one. I don't know what they're looking at, but when somebody brought that to us, if you're a salaried employee, you get no overtime. If you work 60 hours a week, you get no overtime. There is nothing in any of these contracts to give anybody overtime. And all these department heads work more. And when he's saying there's raises of 15, 20%, that's not the point. The point is, we have a town accountant that's getting $38,000 a year. So if it's a large percentage to get her to $52,000, the percentage isn't the key. Are they being paid fair and equitably? So these people are being paid 52, 62, $72,000 for full-time positions. So don't let percentages fool you. That's just the way that he wants to make it seem and nobody gets overtime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Randall Kemp, former Oud. Um, question for the Finance Committee is why some lines were cut, but other ones were untouched? And, um, specifically, department head raises. There are two that were untouched and a as-yet-unnamed town administrator position that has a $26,000 increase for someone who isn't, hasn't even been named yet. But you're, but they're suggesting cutting negotiated raises for existing employees.
Thank you. Want to answer that question?
Michael Rosenberg, 144 East Street Finance Committee. I will do my best to answer that.
Go closer, Michael.
So the town administrator wage line is a placeholder for the upcoming administrator. It's a requested number, um, by the Select Board that we hold, so we are holding that number. In regards to some raises going up and some raises going down, um, there was outreach from department heads about their raises, about why they feel they deserve the raise, about the work they put in. And we made a decision to leave some raises in there from the Select Board's proposed budget. For instance, the accountant, we left her raise in there. She spoke out. She spoke out numerous times on her responsibilities, what she does. She comes to the Finance Committee's af, meetings after hours. She comes to the Select Board meetings after hours. She reached out to us about this. She actually provided other ways for us to help work the budget so it was more economical. Um, not saying that played a factor in who gets what, but it shows the effort and the level of effort there. And we do agree that the employees of the town need to be brought up, but we can't bring all of them up at the same time. If you raise everyone's salary and wages at the same times and don't provide any other programs, you will eventually fall off a fiscal cliff. You will bring the wages and salary line items to a point where services are not going to be able to be provided. This needs to be reined in. There needs to be a good, solid plan of how we do this. Those contracts, which we read, looked like they were written by four different employers. There was no consistency in benefits. There was no consistency in, in perks or continuing education. Something that the town meeting citizens here should realize is that when a contract is signed for an employee, once that contract is appropriated at the town meeting floor, it, it then becomes legal. This is not brought to your attention for whatever reason. We had to specifically request the contracts to see what we would be voting on this evening. This isn't about holding employees back or keeping them down, but it's about intelligently, fiscally moving the town forward. You can't just hand out raises because someone says they need an extra $10,000.
Thank you.
Kurt Bojly, 11 Strong Road. Uh, I, I, from reading this, I can see that the, uh, scrutiny that the Finance Committee has put into this is a lot of work. They've identified some cost reductions. What concerns me, though, is it doesn't end there. What they do then is put it over to the school system. So a school system which gets a lion's share of town revenue each and every year ends up being the major beneficiary of the Finance Committee's recommendation here. So they did not cut costs overall. All they did was reallocate it to an entity that gets a lion's share of town funds to begin with. I think it's time we gave the people that work for the town the recognition and a salary that reflects their value to the town. And the school has a lot of money to look at and they may be able to live without this additional money that's being proposed. So I would, uh, vote against the amendment and, uh, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Aaron Kuchar, 49 Coleman Road. Um, I am the Chair of the School Committee and I will tell you that we net fund at the lowest possible level for our children at school. So you may think that we are given a lot of money. However, the state tells you how much money you have to give your children and have to fund the school at and we are net funded at that lowest possible level not to get in trouble. So we are not overfunding our school systems. We're net funding at the lowest level.
We're going...
Heather Pellegrini, 76 Crookledge Road. I'd just like to give some perspective to the voters before they make a decision, um, on these large department head increases. On the first proposals that were put forth by these department heads, they originally only asked for their 2%. It wasn't until the town accountant's salary, which I will admit, as an accountant, she was grossly underpaid at her previous salary. It wasn't until that request and contract was, uh, put forth and agreed upon that the department heads then came back requesting those, um, extra-large raises.
Thank you. We're going to vote. All those in favor of the amended budget, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. We'll have an amended budget. We have a, we're going to divide the amended question. We're going to vote on each section, discuss each section, then vote on it. And we will not vote on the entirety at the end because legally, we don't have to. General Government, $613,422. Anyone like to address this section? Pro or con? These are your yellow sheets. General Government? Seeing no comment, we'll vote. All those in favor of that figure for general government, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. It passes by majority. Second section, Public Safety, $1,714,201. Any comments? Pro or con? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of that figure for public safety, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The ayes have it by majority. It passes by majority. Anyone who want to address this? Pro or con? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of that figure for education, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The figure, education, passes by majority. Highway, $848,881. Anyone like to speak on this? Pro or con? Please seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the figure for Highway, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Passes by majority. Health and Human Services, $107,876. Anyone like to address this? Pro or con? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the figure under Health and Human Services, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Passes by majority. Culture and Recreation, $163,930. Anyone like to address this? Pro or con? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please signify of the figure under Culture and Recreation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Passes by majority. Seven Employee Benefits, $1,976,746. Anyone like to address this? Pro or con? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the figure for Employee Benefits, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Passes unanimously. Debt Service Principal, $321,850. Anyone like to address this? Pro or con? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the figure for Debt Service Principal, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Passes unanimously. Debt Service Interest, $70,741. Anyone like to address this? Pro or con? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the figure under Debt Service Interest, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Passes unanimously. You have passed a $16,182,192 budget. I have motion for Article 11, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $110,000 to augment the budget of the Willman Norris School.
Motion made, or you're second? Thank you. Anyone can second. Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Erin Kuchar, 49 Coleman Road, School Committee Chair. So we're asking for the $110,000 increase needed because our budget right now is just a level services budget. So to maintain what we currently have right now going on, which does not include any school supplies, curriculum supplies, a math interventionist, and a special ed team leader are the things that that will fund, that we are asking the town to approve. I can speak further on any of those items if need be.
Thank you.
Once again, Kurt Bojely, 11 Strong wrote a question. Is it $110,000 a year for this year only, or is that an ongoing expense that we'll have to pay the school as a result of this vote?
I know they answered that up. I'm going to let Vicky answer it.
Vicky Morrow, Town Accountant. This particular year, under the tax recap, would go specifically for the school. Later on, it gets added to the general levy limit, which we can tax up to. It would be up to the discretion of the Select Board in future years or the Finance Committee to determine whether they actually want to reserve this in the budget ahead of time for the schools.
So they do that each and every year? They make that decision?
They would have to make that decision, correct. This first year, it goes to the schools, but after that, it goes into the general pot of taxation for the entire town.
So this money could considerably be used to pay department heads, et cetera, what they lost in the last article in future years. It does not have to go to the school, is from what I understand, based on the selectmen's decision.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Answers your question? Great. Step right up.
Heather Broder, Madeline Way. Currently, we're second from the bottom in the state of Massachusetts for what we spend to educate our kids in this town. Second from the bottom. Teachers scrimp and beg for supplies or simply go without. A strong school is a strong town. We have an obligation to pay to educate our kids as the townsfolk in the years past did before us. Someone paid for you to go to school, your kids, your grandkids, and you need to pay it forward. I don't think $16 per thousand of taxes has value on your house. It's too much to ask so that the kids get what they need in this town for a proper education.
Jim Young, Miller Avenue. If you would like to refer to your financial report from 2016 on page 77, there's a section in there, Special Revenue, for school choice money, which I believe is a carry-forward amount. So at the end of 2016, there was $354,000 left over. I'm not sure what the number's going to be for 2017, but I believe it's probably going to be around that same number unless someone can tell me. So I'm thinking, instead of taking the $110,000 out of our taxes, use the school choice money. That's what it's there for. Thank you.
Erin Kuchar, 49 Coleman Road. Currently, we use the school choice money to balance our budget. So we take all that money, and we've been balancing the budget to the tune of $500,000 over the $325,000 that we've been collecting because we had carried money in there. We will have no money left in the school choice budget at the end of next year. So that money has already been accounted for. There is no money to take from there.
Thank you. That answer your question? Does that answer your question?
No, I want to hear from the Finance.
Okay. Thank you.
Michael Rosenberg, 144 East Street Finance Committee. Yes, I can confirm what Erin Kuchar said. That is true. And keep in mind, when the school choice funds run out next year, that will leave a gap in their budget of $100,000 to $150,000 that will need to be filled at some point to maintain services at the school. So they have been utilizing school choice funds to provide services here. Those funds will eventually be depleted, and you will need to fund it other ways or reduce services at the school.
Thank you. That answer your question? Thank you, sir.
Patty Mari, Palmore Meadow Road. And I work here at Norris. I just wanted to speak to the supplies that teachers in this building don't have a lot of money because of the low budget to buy supplies. And so many teachers here will go out and spend their own money on supplies for the classrooms. And that just reminds me of like a doctor having to bring their own sutures and their own bandages to a hospital to work on their patients. It doesn't seem fair, and we really need some more money for supplies. Thank you.
Henry Barton, 51 Palmore Meadow Road. Some years ago, when I read that Southampton had the lowest per pupil expenditure in the state, I said in a town meeting like this one, it was a scandal. Well, now we're only this second from the bottom. It's still a scandal.
Thank you. We're going to vote on the motion under Article 11. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The article passes by majority. Article 12, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to master law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to establish a special education stabilization fund for special education expenses at the Norris Elementary School.
Motion made, or you're second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Erin Kuchar, 49 Coleman Road. We're setting up this account to be fiscally responsible for the school as times a special ed expense can happen during the middle of the school year that we do not anticipate, that could be an out-of-district placement. It can be a lot of things that we have to then scramble to find money for. This expenses can go anywhere from $300,000 to $150,000. There's a lot of volatility. And we felt as a school committee that if we could create a stabilization fund that could have money in there for those specific purposes. Mind you, this isn't putting money into it right now. This is just creating the fund for the ability to eventually put money into weather those kind of expenses that come across.
Thank you.
Hello, Robert Sestola, 33 Bissonnette Circle. My daughter is a special ed student, and we do rely on Norris for the services. And we're very appreciative of what Norris is doing for Josephine right now. So this would very much help Josephine as well as the other special ed students that truly rely on these services to learn and at some points, just to get by. Thank you.
Hey, Jay Ferrante, Karen Lane. I would really appreciate a real definition of a stabilization fund.
Fair question. Michael, Vicky? Vicky?
Vicky Morrow, Town Accountant, Palmore Meadow Road. The stabilization fund per mass general law is, as long as it passes at town meeting, it's set up for specific purposes or for any general lawful purpose. We have a couple of them in town that we set up. One for capital purchases, one for operating purchases. We made the distinction between the two probably 10 years ago. And then most recently, we set up one for the fire department for an ambulance. It's basically a savings account for, in this case, for special education for the school. However, the school deems they want to transfer money into that account, it can't be used for anything but that, and it does need a town vote to come out to be used for that purpose. It's just a way of saving specifically for that particular purpose so that you don't tend to spend your money on other things when you know that you could come up against, like Erin said, some unexpected special ed out-of-district costs for those children.
Thank you. Answered your question? Great. We're going to vote. Motion under Article 12. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion, may I hear a nay? Motion passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 13, please?
Article 13. I move that the town vote the budget for the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund as presented in Article 13 of this warrant.
Motion made, or you're second?
Second.
Who would like to address this? Here he comes. Get a sip in before he gets here.
Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent, Transfer Station Manager, Park Superintendent. There are no changes to the days of operation nor to the fee schedule for the fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we're going to vote on the motion under Article 13. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 14, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve the budget of the Water Enterprise Department as presented in Article 14 of this warrant.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Mr. Moderator, Matthew Christie, Middle Road, Chairman of the Water Commission. This is a budget based on our revenues from 2017 and 16 carried forward, and it's a balanced budget that includes some additional capital outlay that we've been programming as well as some additional labor costs that we anticipate incurring this year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Pro or con? Seeing none, we're going to vote on the motion under Article 14. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article 14 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 15, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $20,401 from the WPAT loan repayment account to fund amortization of WPAT bonds in the Water Department.
Motion made. Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this? Please.
Vicky Morrow, Palmore Meadow Road. This is actually to pay back a loan for the Septic Betterment Program that the Board of Health has. We borrowed some money, and this is our loan payment, and we have to keep these on our books in a special revenue fund and then transfer them to pay the debt in the general fund.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions? Comments? Seeing none, we're going to vote on the motion under Article 15 now. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion passes by majority for Article 15. May I hear a motion for Article 16, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $100,000 from the ambulance receipts reserve for appropriations account to the fire EMS department expense account to fund ambulance transportation.
Motion made. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Vicky Morrow, Palmore Meadow Road. We set up this ambulance receipts reserve for appropriation in a special fund, and it gets transferred as another funding source to the general fund to offset some of the expenses for the ambulance EMS.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Michael Rosenberg, 144 East Street Finance Committee. The Finance Committee did recommend this transfer, but we would like an explanation of where and what accounts the funds would be going in. The transfer is more than what has been historically transferred at the annual town meeting. We're just curious as to what the added amount would be going for.
Anyone want to answer that, please?
Last year, we actually transferred $158,000. It's just for their general, you know, their general ambulance wages and their expenses for the EMS.
Answer your question? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 16. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article 16 passes by majority. May I hear a motion, please, for Article 17?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $40,000 from the ambulance receipt reserve for appropriation account to the fire EMS wage account to fund the cost of the ambulance transportation.
Motion made. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
John Workman, Fire Chief, Glendale Road, East Hampton. Yet this motion is for, prior to my arrival, the town fathers had entered into an agreement with the state to provide paramedic-level coverage, which they saw the benefits to the community for a higher level of service. That included building up the fire department over three years. Of that time, we've gone past it. We were supposed to have been at a certain level by October. We were working with the state to retain the paramedic, the high level of ambulance coverage by making an agreement with selectmen that would show that they were actively doing all that they can, knowing that the town does not have a lot of funding. With this, we're trying to take whatever money is extra in the ambulance receipts, which is not near what we need for a second shift, but it would allow for us to increase the hours per day that our ambulance would respond from the station with paramedics. With the monies available at $40,000, it would look to cover an additional four hours through November. And that's what this article is for, is to try and get the money for that advanced-level ambulance funds.
Michael Rosenberg, 144 East Street Finance Committee. Thank you, Chief, for the explanation because frankly, we'd never got an explanation of where this $40,000 would be going, so it is nice to have that. When we had met with the Select Board to review the budget, this is, I guess, where I'm a little confused. We had agreed that the attempt at the second shift would happen during the second half of the year, but it appears that we're transferring money to attempt more hours for the first half of the year. How does that impact the account that you'll be taking the funds from? Will this deplete the count? Will revenues keep up with this? I'm just curious as what happens in November? Will the account have enough to continue the added four hours? Do the four hours have to stop? How are we going to fund that?
If I may, the ambulance service, in the last three and a half years since I've been chief, we have increased our revenue. We're almost up to $200,000 a year in revenue. We project, we're at that same call level this year, if not above. We project to have that same $200,000 in revenue. This money is money that would not come out of the tax base. It would come out of money that's already been collected. It would come close to depleting that account that we have. It would come close to depleting that account that we have of money already collected, but it is not coming from taxpayer funds. It's coming from ambulance revenue.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? You have another one.
So my follow-up question would be, where would the funds come to continue the service? Would we have to reduce the service in town? Would we take funds from somewhere else? Where would we find the funds to continue the service past November?
Well, this is all stock yet. This is really the town trying to do the best to comply with the agreement that we made with the state, showing our good efforts and trying to keep a high level of service for the residents of town. We have historically collected anywhere from 158. Like I say, we're up to, you know, this year, and Town Accountant can verify, I want to say that we collected about 192,000 in revenue. I see no reason why that number should change at this point. I expect that we'll fully collect that 192,000 in the next year up, if not more, because our ambulance runs are increasing. So with the money that we collect, as we move into the new year, new fiscal year, we should be able to fund the ambulance in additional hours past the four hours that we're looking to fund currently right now, today with this vote.
Thank you. Answered your question, Michael? Michael?
Charlie Konecki, just to summarize, we pull in about $16,000 a month on ambulance service, is my understanding. This is a self-generating entity, so the hope would be that by the time we got into November, we'd go on to a special town meeting anyways, there'd be more revenues in that account that we could transfer to keep that level up. This will never be a second shift at this rate, but at least we can bring us past the dinner hour into the evening. So the hope is to be able to cover some of those emergencies in those timeframes.
Thank you. Anyone else saying none? We're going to vote. A motion under Article 17. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article 17 passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article 18, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $57,000 from the operating stabilization account to the health insurance budget.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who would like to address this? Vicki?
Vicki Morrow, Palmory Meadow Road. It's very difficult to budget for life, for health insurance. You know, it all depends on what plans people take, if they take a family plan, if it's to take a single. We have a PPO, we have an HMO, so when the town treasurer, you know, tries to estimate the best that she can based on previous history, sometimes, you know, people don't necessarily take the plans we think they're going to take, and so this won't cover us for the rest of the year to pay for all those plans.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? We're going to vote. We need a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article 18, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. It passes unanimously. Just meeting our two-thirds requirement. May I have a motion for Article 19, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote transfer $2,000 in free cash to the selectmen's expense budget to fund the cost of installing apparatus at the town hall to prevent ice dams.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. You're the damn expert.
Charlie Konecki, you want to hear a sad story? When we redid the town hall, one thing we omitted was insulation in the attic of a certain section of that building. So now what we have is ice dams that have developed. The prior building used to have heaters on the roof. The wiring is there, except the wiring stops at the circuit board. So we need to have some money to bring that wiring out to the roof so we could put some heaters up there. The hope is, when we get designated as a green community, we can use that grant money to take and insulate the attic. This is a short-term stopgap measure until we can get that grant money, which is a year away at this point.
Thank you. Any comments, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Michael Rosenberg, 144 East Street, Finance Committee. The Finance Committee did not recommend this article because no backup was provided. It was also not necessarily concrete what we would be doing. We have found in the past that when we appropriate funds, a sort of, a number to an article without financial backup, sometimes it comes back and we should have appropriated more money, which is why we do not recommend things without financial backup like this.
Thank you.
To answer the question, I went to a number of electricians asking for quotes because the price was so low. Nobody seemed to have an interest in responding. I tried this for a number of months. We're basically looking at two circuits out there on the roof, so we're looking at basically wiring switches, some outlets, and then we're looking at the wires themselves. That was a best guess as to what it would cost.
Thank you. Anybody else saying none? We're going to vote on the motion for Article 19. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion passes by majority for Article 19. May I hear a motion for Article 20, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to accept a donation of land at 82 Brickyard Road Extension as described in Book 8447, page 224, and further to transfer care, custody, and control of said land to the Southampton Conservation Commission.
Motion made. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please?
Marla Hank, Gilbert Road, Conservation Commission. The parcel of land is nine acres known right now as the Howland Conservation Area. It's adjacent to the Manhan Meadows Sanctuary and the Parsons Memorial Forest. It would, we already have some access to the parcel. Of course, if we own it directly, we have that, more things we can do without asking the owner's permission. And also, a good point is that it's adjacent to the railroad tracks, so therefore, when we have a greenway in here, owning, the town owning that parcel of land makes it easier to work on.
Thank you. Anybody else? Saying none, we'll vote. We need two-thirds majority. All in favor of the motion under Article 20, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Unanimous meets a two-thirds requirement for Article 20. May I hear a motion for 21, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town pass over this article.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any explanation?
Given the dire financial conditions that people are concerned with, I think we can forego a sign.
We have a motion to pass over. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. It, we pass over it unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 2, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that 19 million, let me check that, $19,429.22 in fiscal 2017 free cash be transferred to the operational stabilization account.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, motion made, mayor, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Moderator, Bob Markel, 197 Eighth Street, Charlestown. The Operational Stabilization Fund is one of several stabilization funds. These are reserve funds. This is the largest and most important one, and it's been the practice in past years to transfer any surplus free cash into this fund and to be used and kept as a reserve. The Municipal Modernization Act that was passed last fall has changed the rules. It used to be that a two-thirds vote was required to transfer funds into a stabilization fund, and two-thirds vote was required to transfer out. It's been changed now. A simple majority transfers money in. Two-thirds vote is still required to transfer funds from this operational stabilization. We had something over $26,000, but in this, in this warrant, we have already tapped the free cash three times. So the remaining amount is $19,429.22.
Thank you. Anybody else? Pro or con? Simple majority vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 22, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion passes for 22 unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 23, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve a five-year lease for a new copier at the police department.
Motion made. Mayor, a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please?
Mr. Moderator, Bob Markel, 197 Eighth Street, Charlestown. This is a simple matter. In order to contract for a five-year period, it is required that we get town meeting approval. Ordinarily, when the town enters into contracts, the selectmen can approve three-year contracts. Anything over that must be approved by town meeting. We are requesting town meeting approval for a five-year agreement.
Thank you. Anybody else? Pro or con? Saying none, will vote on the motion under Article 23. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion, Article 23, passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 24, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town bylaws be amended to include Article 39, Section 1, revolving funds, and that the revolving funds set forth in Article 24 of the warrant for the annual town meeting of May 16, 2017, be hereby established, and further, that the limitation on expenditures for each revolving fund be established according to Article 24 of the May 16, 2017 annual town meeting.
Motion made. Mayor, a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. It's all yours.
Mr. Moderator, Bob Markel, 197 Eighth Street, Charlestown. The Municipal Modernization Act last fall also changed the way local governments do revolving funds. In the past, we renewed each revolving fund each year and also set a limit on the amount of funds that could be put into the revolving fund and spent. The new regulation from the Commonwealth is that we enact revolving funds permanently, and each year, as you can see, the first chart there is the establishment of revolving funds on a permanent basis, and each year, the town meeting would set a limit on the expenditures from those accounts.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone else? Pro or con? Saying none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 24, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. It passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 25, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to hear and act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee for Fiscal 2017 and to allocate sums of money from the Community Preservation Fund as presented in Article 25 of the warrant for the May 16, 2017 annual town meeting.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Virginia Ahart, 27 Fulmer Road, Chair of Community Preservation. This is the one we do every year. The law says that we have to reserve funds, and we have to make a report to the town, and we have to reserve funds in those three areas.
Just a little closer. A little closer to the mic for those back there. I can lip read from here, but they can't.
And that we have to reserve funds 10% into each of those accounts. Any funds that are not allocated go into undesignated, which we can use in any one of those three.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Saying none, we'll vote. Motion under Article 25, all in favor. Simple majority, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 25 passes unanimously. If I could deliver the motion for Article 26?
I can do that. Move that the town vote to transfer $2,000 from community preservation funds to the Conservation Commission to fund the legal cost for accepting the donation of a parcel of land at 82 Brickyard Road Extension.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded. Would you like to comment?
Well, you voted to accept that, and there'll be legal costs, and so, community preservation funds can be used for that so that it would not be an expense of the town budget.
Thank you. Any comments, any questions? Saying none, we'll vote on the motion. Simple majority under Article 26. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 26 passes unanimously. May I have a motion for Article 27, please?
We'll move that the town vote to transfer $10,000 from community preservation fund to the Southampton Historical Commission to provide a local match for the grant that they have received from the State Historical Records Advisory Board, and this would be...
Motion made. Do I, do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded.
The Bobco's of 181 College Highway, Chairman of the Historical Commission. For the second year in a row, the commission has applied to the state for a grant to restore and preserve, in this case, Revolutionary War stones at the National Register Center Cemetery. We have been awarded that grant of up to $10,000, so we're requesting, then that's a matching grant, so we are requesting an additional 10 to fulfill our obligation to the state for the project.
Thank you. Any comments, any questions? Pro or con? Saying none, we'll vote on the motion under Article 27. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 27 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion, Article 28, please?
Move that the town vote to transfer up to $65,000 from community preservation funds. It's actually the recreation line that it would be coming out of to the Norris School Parent Teacher Organization to fund installation of playground equipment for preschool and kindergarten classes.
Motion made. May I have a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this? You're there.
Well, I thought there might be someone.
Well, you have company coming.
Oh.
And a hand raiser, waiver.
Juliette Locke, 106 Crooked Ledge Road. I'm also the current PTO Chair at Norris Elementary. Thank you, Virginia. I just want to add that Norris today does not have an appropriately-aged structure for preschool children. The current structure is for the older children that attend the school. And also, it's been evident through the meeting tonight that the school simply doesn't have an overflow of budget to afford such a structure, so we're very thankful to the Community Preservation Committee for supporting this project.
Thank you. Anybody else? Saying none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 28. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion for 28, article passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 29, please?
Move that the town vote to transfer up to $6,000 from community preservation open space recreation account to the Park Commission to fund a new signage program for Southampton Parks.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Who do you want to speak on the parks? Signage. Go ahead.
I thought maybe Mark Reed was here.
He's coming.
Mark Reed, 166 Brickyard Road, Chairman of the Park Commission here in Southampton. We are requesting this fund to provide signage... We are requesting this fund to provide signage at not only Conant Park, but the new Labrie Field, which does not have a sign, and Crossroads Park. We also have a number of old signs that are in, um, you can't even read anymore because they're so old, and we're looking to upgrade all those signs. We also have an issue at the park with dogs and the use of dogs, and we're trying to develop a program so that people will not, um, allow their dogs to wander around the park and use the park as a toilet facility.
We got it. Thank you. Anybody else? Pro or con? Seeing none, simple majority will vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article twenty-nine, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion for Article twenty-nine passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article thirty, please?
Move that the town vote to transfer two thousand dollars from Community Preservation Historical Preservation Account to the Veterans Grave Officer for cleaning and straightening of Revolutionary War and Civil War veterans' graves.
Motion made, Mayor, second? Motion made and seconded?
This is the ongoing, uh, projects that Mr. Frary has been working on to get all of our veterans' graves in good shape. And so this is a part of that.
Thank you. Anybody? Come?
Ellen Sanghas, Fulmer Road. Can you just clarify how this differs from Article twenty-seven?
This is, um, a, a smaller project that he's been working on, and it would include the Civil War as well as the Revolutionary War. The, uh, one that they got the matching grant for is a much more extensive. It's not just cleaning and a little straightening, um, which this one does, um, for the, uh, for the, the graves that Mr. Frary's working on. The, the one that Mr. Cozav spoke about is a much more extensive, um, repair and that sort of thing.
Thank you. Answer your question? Two separate projects, probably two separate submittals, and one's for Civil War and Revolutionary. Another one is a larger project only for Revolutionary. That's what I got from the answer. Anybody else? Seeing none, we're going to vote on the motion for Article thirty. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion, Article thirty, passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article thirty-one, please?
Move that the town vote to transfer up to five thousand dollars to the Veterans Grave Officer from Community Preservation Historic Preservation Funds for the purchase and installation of flat granite markers in front of Revolutionary and Civil War veterans' graves.
Motion made, Mayor, second? Motion made and seconded, like to address this?
Well, the, this is, Mr. Frary's been working on this about ten years. When he first began, the Veterans Administration provided these for free, and then suddenly, the only people that could get them were direct descendants of the person that was buried there. Otherwise, they have to be paid for. And, um, so this is what pay for the purchase and installation of more of those.
Thank you. Comments? Questions? Seeing none, will vote on the motion for thirty-one, Article thirty-one. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion for Article thirty-one passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Frary. May I hear a motion for Article thirty-two, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer for up to fifty-three thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars and forty cents from Operation Stabilization to the Police Department expense budget for the purchase of a new Ford Explorer Interceptor or comparable vehicle. Set price to include emergency lights, siren cage, video cameras, laptop computer, and lettering.
Motion made, Mayor, second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this?
Evening.
Evening.
Uh, this car would replace a two thousand eleven, I'm sorry, Mike Guet, Police Chief. Uh, this, this, uh, would replace a car that's a twenty-eleven Crown Vic with a hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred miles on it. Uh, we just had to put three thousand dollars into it for a transmission to be rebuilt tonight. One of my officers had to go buy a starter to have that put into it, uh, and we just did the water pump. So, it's aging and, and falling apart. So, we're asking for, um, the new cruiser, which would then, uh, add on to the fleet. We are, we already have, uh, two Ford Explorers now, uh, that would, uh, give us the three and to help us, uh, keep our fleet in good standing.
Thank you. Any comments? Questions? Pro? Con? Seeing none, will vote on the motion for Article thirty-two, which needs a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion for Article thirty-two passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds requirement. May I have a motion for Article thirty-three, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize transfers from the Ambulance Stabilization Fund as well as short-term borrowing, if necessary, to fund the purchase over five years of a new ambulance for the fire EMS service.
Motion made, may I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded?
John Workman, Fire Chief. Um, the original fund set up for the ambulance was so that we could replace ambulances as needed. Um, this ambulance is a two thousand nine, but unfortunately, we've had major problems with it. Um, it was out of service for almost, uh, three months last year. Uh, we, uh, spent ten thousand dollars, uh, not including personnel costs because we had to run the ambulance with a, another car to get a ride back. Two times down into Connecticut, third time back to the factory. Um, the factory representative said that this ambulance is really, has many endemic problems, that, uh, we're going to be looking at spending this money each year. What we think is the prudent choice here is to go with a new ambulance off of state bid. This ambulance that we currently have, as it's functioning now, they would take it as part of a trade-in value, um, for the proposed money that's in front of us tonight. Um, and where that money would be coming out of, uh, ambulance receipts, um, plus a note written that would be paid back from the money that gets taken in by the ambulance.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this? Michael from the Finance Committee.
Michael Rosenberg, one forty-four East Street, Finance Committee. Um, just in response to the trade-in value, is the three, I should start again. Um, the Finance Committee did recommend the article. Um, we did want to make sure that the ambulance was dispositioned, declared surplus property, traded in, that we received some sort of financial value back for it. Is the three nineteen nine ninety-three, is that the cost without the trade-in? The trade-in is to be assessed in the future?
The, the cost for the ambulance, um, with the trade-in is included in that state bid contract for the three nineteen, so they're giving us money for the ambulance that we currently have.
Thank you. That answered your question?
Dan Pellegrini, seventy-six Crooked Ledge Road. Chief, how much did they give us for trade-in value on that vehicle?
I, I wish we had a better number. Um, it's functioning now, they're only giving us sixteen thousand dollars for it. Um, it's an unfortunate number. Um, we're looking, the ambulance that we've, uh, specked out off of the state bid is one that Westfield currently runs. They run it for five years. Will actually be running, we have an expectation that our ambulances will last fifteen years. If the thing i- is not functioning, um, if we had to put another ten thousand dollars into it, it really isn't worth anything. So, right now, it's, it's, it's getting by. It's worth sixteen thousand dollars, and that's what they're giving, uh, in trade-in value, and it's not a lot of money.
Thank you. Answer your question? I've never heard that response before.
Aaron Kuchar, um, four nine Coleman Road. I'm just wondering, and only because I think that as a town, we should know, how much is coming out of the stabilization fund, and how much are we borrowing for this?
Thank you.
It says it's being funded by both of those pieces?
Vicki Morrow, Palmeri Meadow Road. Currently, we have seventy-five thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars in the ambulance stabilization fund and whatever interest we potentially could collect through the end of the year. So, what do we have? Three nineteen nine ninety-three minus? Seventy-five seven hundred and sixty. Two hundred and forty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Thank you. Can I answer your question?
Which would be the borrowing?
Yeah, okay. Any comments? Questions? Seeing none, we're going to vote. Uh, motion under Article thirty-three, two-thirds majority, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds requirement. May I have a motion for Article thirty-four, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire temporary and/or permanent easements by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen shall determine on the parcels of land on plans entitled Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division Preliminary Right-of-Way Plans Glendale Road Phase Two in the Town of Southampton, Hampshire County. Revised through April two thousand seventeen, prepared by Vanis Hagan Breslin Incorporated. As said, plans may be amended for public way purposes, including but not limited to the construction, alteration, maintenance, improvements, repair, and/or replacements of roads and sidewalks for the drainage, grading, clearing, and slope work, erosion control, driveway reconstruction, and landscaping of Glendale Road End. Further, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate and transfer from available funds, accepted gifts, or borrow a sum of money to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements and take all related actions necessary or appropriate to carry out said acquisitions, expositions, and other acts authorized herein upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen may deem appropriate.
Thank you. We have a motion, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
We're all experiencing the, uh, reconstruction on Route Ten for Safe Roots for Schools. This is sort of, uh, the next parallel project. It's not for schools, but the reality is, is our need stake funding that's going to occur is going to be for the construction of the roadway on Glendale Road between Route Ten and Palmeri Meadow Road. Uh, the first act is the authorization. The second act is going to be moving forward and talking to the abutters to see what negotiations we get into for easement rights, deed restrictions, modifications of plans and that. Uh, this is basically being funded through the state in our Chapter Ninety money.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments? Seeing none, will vote. Uh, motion under Article thirty-four. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds requirement. May I hear a motion for Article thirty-five, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of portions of the parcels of land shown in Assessors Map thirteen to seventy-five, Assessors Map thirteen dash seventy-six, and Assessors Map thirteen dash one five seven from the Board of Water Commissioners or the Board or Officer with custody of the property held for water supply and protection purposes or such purposes for which the parcels are currently held, which portions are shown approximately on a plan of land entitled Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division Preliminary Right-of-Way Plans Glendale Road Phase Two in the Town of Southampton, Hampshire County. Revised through April two thousand seventeen, prepared by Banas Hagan Breslin Incorporated. As said, plans and portions may be amended, which plans are unfiled with a town clerk, and which portions are hereby transferred to the Select Board for public way purposes, including but not limited to the construction, alteration, maintenance, improvement, repair, and/or replacement of roads and sidewalks, and for drainage, grading, clearing, and slope work, erosion control, driveway reconstruction, and landscaping of Glendale Road, and to authorize the Select Board to grant such easements as may be necessary to accomplish the foregoing, and further to authorize the Select Board to seek such authorization and approval of the General Court as is necessary to allow for such transfer and use, which may include a petition brought pursuant to the provisions of Article Ninety-seven of the Articles of Amendment to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical and/or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Select Board approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, which are within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition, and to authorize the Select Board to approve such amendments, and further to authorize the Select Board to take all related actions necessary or appropriate to carry out the acts authorized herein upon such terms and conditions as the Select Board may deem appropriate.
It always fascinates me how mathematically impossible it is to see that the newest Select Board member always reads the longest motion at the next meeting. Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this? Oh, oh. Come on, Charlie. Charlie Kinnicky, Chair of the Select Board.
Okay, this is basically the second article on the same topic. There is some conservation land there that's in question. We need authorization to take and step onto that conservation land to do this construction. There may be some deed restrictions that we're going to have to take and modify the plans as is. So, this is sort of a process that's in flux as we move forward, but we need the town's authorization so we can start moving forward.
Thank you. Any comments? Questions? Seeing none, will vote. Simple majority, all in favor of Article, motion under Article thirty-five, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The article passes unanimously, and if there was a nay, I didn't hear it. Uh, motion for Article thirty-six, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Bisnet Circle as a public way as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and shown on a plan entitled Bobcat Hollow dated May seventh, two thousand and nine, prepared for Joseph C. Sampson and recorded in the Hampshire Registry of Deeds, Plan Book two twenty, page one zero four, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain, the fee to and/or easements in Bisnet Circle for all purpose for which public ways are used in the Town of Southampton, and any drainage, utility, access, and any other easements related thereto, all as shown on the plan.
Motion made, Mayor, second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address Bisnet Circle?
Jim Labrie, sixty-six Gun Road, Southampton Planning Board. This has been an ongoing project since two thousand and nine. They have completed it. Highway Superintendent has, um, indicated that he's happy with it. The planning board voted to, uh, accept this road, so, uh, it's been put on the article for town meeting.
Thank you. Anybody? Comments? Questions? Seeing none, we're going to vote on the motion for Article thirty-six, and that needs a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Hearing no nays, it passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds requirement. May I hear a motion for Article thirty-seven, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town, A, authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise on such terms as, and conditions as the Board shall determine, a port-
purposes of water supply and a pumping station, to authorize the Board to enter into all agreements and take all related actions necessary or appropriate to carry out said acquisitions, and B, raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, and/or borrow a sum of money for the acquisition of said land and costs related thereto.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Matt?
Matt Christie, Middle Road, Chairman of the Water Commission. Currently, the town of Southampton has no backup water supply. We can serve portion of our system via City of East Hampton, but it's only a portion of the system. We've worked with the City of East Hampton this year to enter into a municipal agreement that will provide service, water service to the entire town, with the stipulation that we have to install a pumping station to reach the higher elevations in town. Working with East Hampton, we've identified two locations for this pumping station, one being off Coleman Road on the parcel identified. We, it's essential to our system to get a backup supply in place, and therefore, we'd like to move forward with the acquisition of this parcel, or this easement.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Brittany Gooder, with forty-seven Coleman Road. Just a question about what the pumping station would look like, dimensions, and if that'll go through normal permitting as usual.
Okay.
Matt Christie, again, Water Commission. We're not exactly sure what the pumping station will look like. We envision something around a thirty-by-thirty building, no more than one story tall. There'll be a small parking area for the maintenance crew that would operate it, and of course, it would go through all town and state permitting to erect the building.
One story, thirty-by-thirty. Does that answer your question?
One of them.
Well, one of them? You can ask the, you can ask the second one after him. And I know you want to ask, is it cinder block or aluminum siding?
Dan Pellegrini, Brookledge Road. Mr. Christie, did you, I hear you're right that this is going to expand water service through town?
No.
Okay. That's what I thought. Thanks.
Thank you. So you want to know what it's made of? I'm reading your mind. Come on up.
Brittany, forty-seven Coleman Road. The question that I have is, would that be the only use for the parcel in mind in the town right now?
I can't answer that question. Currently, the Board of Water Commissioners is seeking permission to acquire a permanent easement for the purchase of pumping station.
Fair. I can't hear you if you're not at a mic.
Can Mr. Knickie address that, or someone from the Select Board? Are there any other plans for the parcel?
We'll have a member of the Select Board address that.
Thank you.
Charlie Knickie.
I think you're talking about a parcel across the street. The parcel the Water Commissioners are after for their pumping station will probably have a limited surface area that will support a pumping station. If we're thinking parking lots for greenways and stuff like that, I don't see there's going to be the landmass there for that.
Okay, thank you. Answers the question. Anybody else? Any comments? Questions? All right, we're going to vote. Motion on Article thirty-seven requires a two-thirds majority. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article thirty-seven passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds requirement. May I have a motion for Article thirty-eight, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of up to two million, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars is appropriate to pay for the cost of the design, construction of a water system improvement in the town, including but not limited to all or any portion of those improvements describing town's water system master plan dated December twenty sixteen, and for the payment of all costs, incidentals, and related thereto, and that to meet these disappropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount under pursuant to Chapter forty-four, Section eight of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premiums received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applies to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of the cost approved by this in the vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. And that the total sum to be borrowed upon under Article thirty-seven and Article thirty-eight of this annual town meeting shall not exceed two million, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars in aggregate.
In aggregate. Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Matt Christie.
Matt Christie, Water Commission.
Get a little closer, Matt, so they can...
Passage of this article will allow the Water Commission to implement our five-year capital plan that we developed over the course of two thousand fifteen and sixteen. We have identified about two and three-quarter million dollars' worth of work. One million of that is the pumping station that we previously discussed. The rest of the work is essentially water main replacement work, as well as rehabilitating our current well. This article allows us to borrow with the assistance of the treasurer and the accountant to go out to market and borrow money. We've programmed those payment, principal and interest costs into our current budget that was passed this evening, and we anticipate carrying those forward on future budgets. Our rate structure has already been set up to accept this additional payment as well.
Thank you. Any more comments? Questions?
So what's the percentage of the town that is on town water versus on well water? And will the cost of this be borne by the town water people, or shared by town and well water people as well?
Thank you.
Although that's not really related to the article, I will answer the question. The Water Department is set up...
We have flexibility in this town meeting.
Apparently. The Water Department is set up as an enterprise fund, and the rate payers are the individuals that finance the water system improvements.
Thank you. Any comments? Any questions? We need a two-thirds majority. We're going to vote on the motion, Article thirty-eight. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Aye.
We need counters. All those in favor, we need an exact figure for the Attorney General. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Put your hands down. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your hands.
Oh, zero.
I thought you saw four fingers. Okay. Motion passes fifty-three to three by majority. May I hear the motion for Article thirty-nine? And it meets our two-thirds requirements. May I hear the motion for Article thirty-nine, please?
Mr. Moderator, I, A, move that up to one million, seven hundred thousand dollars is appropriated for the purpose of financing the construction of the water system improvements, including without limitations, all costs thereof as defined in Section one of Chapter twenty-nine C of the general laws, as most recently amended by Statute nineteen ninety-eight, Chapter seventy-eight, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen is authorized to borrow one million, seven hundred thousand dollars, and issue bonds or notes therefore under Chapter forty-four of the general laws, or insert reference to other applicable general or special law governing the issuance of local bonds, end quote, and/or Chapel, Chapter twenty-nine C of the general laws, as most recently amended by Statute nineteen ninety-eight, Chapter seventy-eight, that such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town unless the treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen determines that they should be issued as limited obligations, and may be secured by the local system revenues as defined in Section one of Chapter twenty-nine C, as most recently amended by Statute nineteen ninety-eight, Chapter seventy-eight, that the treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen is authorized to borrow all or a portion of said amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, established pursuant to Chapter twenty-nine C, as most recently amended by Statute nineteen ninety-eight, Chapter seventy-eight, and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or a security agreement with the trust, and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, that the Board of Selectmen or other appropriate local body or official is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection, to expend all funds available for the project, and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project, and B, and that the total sum be borrowed upon under Article thirty-seven and Article thirty-eight of this annual town meeting warrant shall not exceed two million, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars in aggregate.
And that proves my mathematical hypothesis that the, also applies to the recently re-elected Select Board member, and a second-longest motion. Motion made. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this? Matt Christie.
Matt Christie, Water Commission. This is another mechanism for us to obtain funding for the capital improvements. It's not an addition, I just want to make it clear, it's not an additional one-point-seven million dollars. We're only looking in aggregate for two-point-seven million between the two forces of funding, one being the ones that we passed in Article thirty-eight, which is out on the street, public bonds, and the other is through this article, which is state revolving fund money. It's a state loan. Due to the timing of the projects, the state loan may be more advantageous to us than the public bonds.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions? Got plenty of time. Seeing none, we'll vote. Two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article thirty-nine, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article thirty-nine passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds requirement. And that concludes our business of the night. I will entertain a motion to dissolve our annual town meeting.
So moved.
Not adjourned, dissolve. Adjourned means the next night. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Annual town meeting is dissolved. Thank you. Ms. Janine Domina, our elected town clerk, our elected Deputy Moderator Carl Keener, our counters, East Hampton Media, Ryan, thank you for your valuable participation. Give yourself a big hand. Safe home.
Yeah. Oh, she is so good.
We made it in one night.
She still have her little boot on.
She's got her boot on, but she's...
Hey!
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you. Because that must have been tough, like her first commute, and you're like pushing her down the aisle. Aw, poor thing.